Good morning. I'd like to call the meeting to order for the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM. Join us, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any blue sheets for citizen input in the room. Oh, they're over there.
Over here.
Thank you so much. Yes, since no one's sitting there. Thank you.
Service.
Thank you, thank you. Charles, would you like to go first? And please identify yourself for the record.
Okay. Hello, my name is Charles Baer. I live in Redmond, Oregon, and I'd like to say thank you to the Deschutes County Commissioners for the wonderful job that you're doing. And I'd like to say thank you to the Deschutes County Commissioners for giving me this time to speak. You know, I've spoken in front of the Bend City Council and I've spoken in front of the Redmond City Council on many occasions, and it's important it's an important part of our democracy, and it's an important part of our government to have public speaking in front of our elected leaders. And it seems to me that the Bend City Council and the Redmond City Council has gone on permanent lockdown in terms of allowing citizens to come speak in person in front of the city councils. And I'm concerned about that, and I just wanted to bring that up. And I just wanted to thank the Deschutes County Commissioners for keeping this very important, very important transparent, public forum for people to come and speak because it really is important. So thank you again. Also, I want to say happy new year to everybody, and I'm very optimistic about this year. I think this is going to be a fantastic year. I think that this is going to be a great year for Deschutes County and for Deschutes County politics. I think, I think people are getting very motivated and politically aware. And I think people are getting very excited about a whole bunch of new candidates coming into the mix. And I think it's going to be, we're going to get a lot of good work done. So I'm very, very happy about this year. I look back on last year, and there was a bunch of stuff going on, and I didn't I didn't I wasn't made aware of a lot of opinions from our leaders, our political leaders in Deschutes County on a few important topics. There was a lot of silence on a few important issues. One of the issues was a year ago today when the Republican Party tried to overthrow the government. For the record, I'm against overthrowing the government, but I'd like to hear more from, from the leaders of Deschutes County on where they stand on overthrowing the government. And also, a man was murdered here in Bend last year on the street, and nobody's really talking about that. I'd like to hear more about that. And I'd like to hear more about other things like that. My few minutes is probably coming on. Thank you very much, and have a great year.
Thank you for being aware. I don't know if someone is available to do a time. The clock?
I was able to start.
Did you start it? Okay. I was looking at my clock, and I'm going like, okay, it's not on the screen.
I can start three minutes again.
Okay, thank you so much. Rondo, would you like to?
If I could also just say, I thank you for, thank you for thanking us for keeping meetings open. At this time, while the Omicron variant of COVID is raging through our community, it is really important for people to wear masks during these public meetings so that we can continue to have them in person. So, you know, thank you for wearing your mask and thank you for making sure it's up above your nose.
I'm going to assume that we can speak, so we can speak clearly.
I talk through my mask, so I would, I would appreciate it if you would talk through yours.
I can't always understand people who are speaking through their masks. I would like to also add my voice to the thanking of our county commissioners and to point out that it takes a level of bravery to do something that others at your peer level aren't doing. And I am speaking to you, but I'm also speaking to the larger you. If you're representing us in this democratic republic of ours, and you're not allowing us to make contact with you in a room or in a space, then I don't think you're doing your job. And so what I'm saying is that you three are doing your job more than you three, if I may say. And it is a team sport, democracy is. And I am tired of no longer having expectations in my life on a personal or a political level. And 2022 is going to be different because we are going to have those expectations. And you can't have expectations without demands. And so we're going to see some things this year that we haven't seen before because people of courage are going to follow you, or they're going to lead you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rondo. Okay, are there any calls on Stephanie that you can see on Zoom this morning? Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yes, I think that's one of the good things that we as county commissioners has done is we've really, truly, this whole pandemic, tried to maintain our relationship with the community. And I think it really helps our meetings by being in person. It's, you know, thank goodness we have the room to be spaced here, but truly, it is, you know, it is government and it is your government. So thank you for reminding us of how important it is. And, you know, I would hope other people would see that and perhaps realize that it is important.
And I'll just take a moment and acknowledge, you know, there were, we used to have six of us up here at the front. So the county administrator, deputy county minister, legal counsel, commissioners. We were all just side by side right up here. So we have a little bit of elbow room to be able to have these public meetings. So it is a different time, but I do advocate for meetings in public. I've been asking for meetings. We had a joint meeting with the city of Bend, and we did meet in this room. I think pretty much everybody was here. I don't know if there was one or two that were remote, but yeah, I do advocate for that. And, you know, let's do it appropriately. Whatever we need to do, space it out, six-foot tables, big room. I do advocate for that.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I approve approval of the consent agenda.
And I will second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Our first action item today, we have promised that the COVID update would be at 9:30, so we can go ahead. There is a request for a new code enforcement specialist. Peter?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, and I'm joined here with Sheri Pinner, our Senior Management Analyst. And I'll turn it over to Sheri to provide you an overview in terms of kind of the budgeting and our, and our finances in terms of this respectful request for another code compliance officer. And certainly, we're here to answer any other questions you may have about the program certainly as summarized in the memorandum.
Good morning. You may recall during CDD's 2022 budget presentation, we mentioned that we may be back before you to expand our code enforcement, our code compliance team, and that's where we're at today. So kind of in short, cases are coming in at a higher rate than we can actually close them out. We have a staff of four, a team of four, and two of those are recently vacated and have gone through the recruitment process. So we have two new staff beginning probably in February. Each of the four current or previous staff had a caseload of anywhere between, say, 120 and 200 cases, which is significantly high. We've done some analysis on, we do believe that a fifth code compliance staff would certainly help this team manage the volume that we've experienced. And then also, it would really pair well with the training if the third person could, could start with the two positions that are open, and then we could train them all at the same time. And there's certainly a lot of conversation that we could have, but I didn't want to continue to discuss what's in the memo. And I thought maybe we could see what questions you have. I do believe current revenues and future revenues will cover the cost. And certainly, this particular fiscal year, we've had, like many departments across the county, we've had a significant amount of unfilled positions, and so we've had cost savings, if you will. And so I don't see that as being a problem.
So Sheri, today, do you have the number through the entire 2021? Because it's through September on our information?
I am just beginning to look at December and year-end stats, so I do not have anything, anything more frequent or recent than November.
September is what it says on here. It says January through September 2021?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I updated the number. The 801 is through the end of November, and I failed to update the
It is through November?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
My apologies.
No, 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 no. I just, I was hoping that we could, you know, have the number. Okay, so perhaps it was the same as last year then, the number?
They're very close. As you can see with the annual code compliance cases, we really had a significant increase beginning in 2018. And those cases have really plateaued at a fairly high number. And we anticipate, you know, there was 880 in 2020. Yes, 2020 through November of 2021, it was 801, and I suspect we easily received 100 in December because that's kind of standard.
Right. And it's a lot of cases per person, too, isn't it?
Correct, correct.
Can I ask about, I mean, this is just a bit of historical context, but what happened between 2016 and 2018? I mean, we went, we practically doubled the number of code compliance cases from 494 in 2016 to, you know, 935 in 2018. What was going on in Deschutes County that suddenly there was, you know, almost a doubling of code, code compliance cases?
You know, the, there's, there's probably many answers to that question, many factors. But the one that comes to the top of my mind is we had sort of a shift in how we received cases. We had a point in time where we, the sheriff's office began submitting cases that they see when they're out and about in the community. That certainly increased the number of cases. You know, we certainly have, if something comes to our attention that's not reported, reported by a citizen, and, you know, and if it's a fire, life, and safety issue, we report that ourselves to code enforcement. And so I believe that that is one of the larger factors, but there probably are many.
Commissioner Chang, I was going to also respond, just some other factors for consideration. The significant investment that we're seeing in Deschutes County at a macro level, as our, as our community becomes, do I dare say, more, more of a metropolitan experience, you know, in terms of the built environment, there's just, people have higher expectations about how the county should look and function than it did, you know, when we were more rural, when our population was less than 200,000 people. The other experience that we've, so that's the macro perspective. More people are investing in the rural county and have, have expectations. But the other, the other factor that we've seen over time, there was a point where if someone was in code compliance, and let's say they had unpermitted structures, and they applied, they needed to apply for building permits to get those into code. There was a point where we in good faith said, okay, you're, you've got the building permits. You're, you know, we're going to sign off on you completing your voluntary compliance agreement. You've got the permits, and we're going to presume that those are going to get implemented. And what we found in several instances, and it's not in the hundreds, of course, but there's been instances where people have not followed through on those building permits. And so we're learning and adapting to experiences where we are, in the past, we've given people the benefit of the doubt. They've demonstrated good faith. We have all these other files that take priority, only to come to realize that it's taking more time to work cooperatively with people who are in code compliance to get them actually into the end zone, get them past the goal line, right? And so that's another set of factors, but there's, there's many others that, that, that lead to the spike. But certainly, the cases are becoming much more complex just to, just to resolve. And that in itself is adding to our efficiencies. And the program has not adapted to be, you know, quick and easy because of the individuality or the individual circumstances associated with other cases, with each case, and again, trying to get them to voluntary compliance.
I can see we're kind of still halfway between the enforcement and compliance terminology. There's both of them on the memo here. But it really is an effort and an outreach to, you know, bring, bring people up to, up to kind of community expectations. The culture of fire, life, and safety, plus, you know, I, we get the calls, or I've gotten the call a few times from a real estate agent saying, hey, man, I got this great property for sale, but that person across the street sure has their, you know, treasures, or whatever the situation is. So then there's just kind of promotes that, that, that community discussion about what can we do about it? We've got a great culture at the county of just making the presence. Let's get some voluntary compliance. Let's just get some vision on what we're, what we're seeing here. As I say, there's all kinds of cases out there also, a long history of it in Deschutes County. And it is a function of, you know, property values and population density. And we've, we've seen that over the years. It used to be, oh, yeah, there's people out there, but they're just taking care of themselves and nobody, but then all of a sudden, properties sell on both sides, and we're like, well, how can we help this neighborhood kind of raise the, you know, I don't know if it's the, you know, the, the culture of it or whatever, you know, just different views of what's going on out there. So, yeah, I do support adding this position, making a strong positive reference to, you know, the people that are buying the properties, but also just, you know, just health and safety, groundwater protection, just the basics also.
I also support adding this position, but I, I still have some questions about how we align the work that, to be done with how we pay for it. And I, just kind of based on these categories, I'm guessing there are things, there are things in this caseload where someone just got a permit, you know, in the last year or two, and now you're having to check on, on that, on that person and making sure that they're complying with the, the terms of that permit. But there's also stuff like, you know, solid waste, noxious weeds. People don't get a permit to have noxious weeds. So if we're using revenue from other, other people who are, you know, getting permits to, to, to do various kinds of developments or land uses, and then we're using that revenue to enforce noxious weeds, it, it doesn't seem quite right to me. It really seems like there's part of the, the code compliance load that is about maintaining quality of life for long-term residents. You know, because I'm guessing that long-term residents are often the people who are complaining, you know, filing complaints about code violations. And if we are trying to maintain quality of life for long-term residents, I actually think that it may be more appropriate to pay for that out of property tax revenues than, than, than fee revenue. And, you know, that's, that's just a, you know, that's just my opinion. So I would love to get a, a sense from you all of kind of the breakdown of, you know, how much of this code compliance activity is tied to something that someone recently paid a fee for? And how much is, you know, really, you know, protecting the quality of life of people in the community who are long-term residents and property taxpayers?
Very good discussion and great question. So code compliance has two lines of revenue. One is a noxious weed grant. So we receive, I believe it's 14,000, it could be 12, but it's right in that range to manage and implement the noxious weed program, which is new to us this year. And then we have a 0.25% charge against building valuation. So against every building permit that comes in. So that's a structural, single-family dwelling permit, commercial, and also the remodels, is charged against the building valuations. And, and that is, that is simply the, the two revenue lines that we have.
Okay.
I am unclear on, has it, has it, it's, it's likely been calculated and charged that way for many, many decades, I'm assuming. Certainly as long as I've been with the county.
The way I see it is, as we're going up and the activity is growing, this, you know, we do have the capacity for this position. If there's a point in the future when, you know, the, the building permit revenue does either taper off or go flat, there will be a discussion about general fund at some point. We've done that with long-term, long-term planning during a recession, when, you know, permitting stops, but we really want to have a vision of kind of a long-term plan about what development options are out in the future. So there's a kind of an up and down cycle to this. We're in the, generally, the up cycle because of the
Right.
investment that's happening. So, yeah, at some point, there may be a discussion about, you know, funding or backfilling or
I appreciate that, but it, it seems like, right, I mean, you know, based on the amount of complaints that we get, it sure seems like the, the need for code compliance capacity is huge. And, and there are expectations in our community about, about, you know, how timely the county is going to be and, and, you know, whether things are going to get fixed or not. And if, if permit revenue is, is constraining us from adding capacity, it's kind of like, we have to check the permit revenue first before we can think about adding this capacity that we just need. Then I, I don't think we want to wait until, you know, I don't think we want to just kind of keep this coupled to permit revenue, and then when permit revenue tapers off, think about general fund investment. But I think it would make sense to think about general fund investment on the front end, basically, again, for maintaining the quality of life of long-term residents and property taxpayers. That's, you know, I mean, am I, am I right that a lot of the, the code compliance cases are initiated by neighbors who, you know, they didn't, they didn't, you know, they didn't, they didn't get a permit for X, Y, or Z in, in recent times. They're just, you know, frustrated or disappointed or upset about what's happening in their neighborhood.
I believe you are correct. And again, the revenue generated for code compliance is a factor of new development, building permits, regardless to the reason that permit was purchased. So for example, if someone's in code compliance and they need to purchase a building structure to satisfy meeting their requirements to be out of code compliance, that permit would just so happen to have a code compliance fee associated with it. But many of the, the permits that I believe code compliance cases need to get, so perhaps it's an electrical permit or a mechanical permit, those don't have any factor of a code compliance fee. It's all the new development within the rural Deschutes County that generates the revenue for our code compliance program.
And I would add, if I can, Madam Chair and the commission, in terms of context, in terms of the, the volume, most of our complaints are coming from the sheriff's office as they're in the community, and they, they see something that has an imminent public health and safety issue. Our building inspectors are out in the field, and if they see as part of an inspection that there's a, someone inhabiting a structure that doesn't have permits, they're going to, they're obligated. Of course, that's a significant issue of, of, of a building that, that's been built without proper permitting. Our onsite wastewater team, our environmental soils team, when they go out and, you know, in the community, they will often see irregularities in relationship to RV hookup or just inappropriate septic disposal. So those, those all play a role. It's, it's, it's our colleagues, I mean, it's not to say that we don't, we don't get neighbor complaints. We certainly do. But it's our colleagues that are out in the community fulfilling their, their kind of, their various responsibilities that, that, that trigger. I think when you, when you combine all of them, those are generating most of the complaints. And many of the, and many, I would say, you know, as Sheri noted, you know, that we have approximately 800 active files. You know, there's, we're going through the data now just because there's a fresh opportunity to look at the structure of code compliance with some of the recent resignations that we've had. But there are many properties that have multiple violations, multiple infractions. And so 800 is a lot. I'm not trying to diminish that number, but there's a significant subset that have five or six violations relating to all the categories I just highlighted. And so one code compliance specialist is working with a property owner, you know, to handle a multitude of issues. And, and when there are those, the significant elements to a property, it takes a, it takes a lot of time to just coordinate, sometimes with our, with our legal counsel as well to, to get those property owners into compliance.
I just wanted to make a comment. I just so appreciate Angie, the job that she does. She is so good, and I'm hoping she's not one of those people that gave notice. I'm so sorry to hear that the team is down, and I do, I support adding this position also. I, we've got to do a better job. I know, I, I drove out in July of 2020 to a home site that was being, the neighbors were furious over, and I drove out there in July of '21. And I wasn't particularly impressed with the amount of progress we'd made, honestly, but I know it's being worked on. So sometimes I realize it takes longer than what we as, or as the residents on that street really are hoping that we can do. And I think we really desperately need to add another person. And especially since we're down two, it makes, it makes perfect sense. Is there a motion?
I mean, I'd also just like to say, thank you for sharing kind of that, how the intake process works. It's helpful to understand that. But when, I mean, we do get a lot of, we do get a lot of citizen complaints. And I, I would like to be able to say to those people, I, you know, I don't, what I don't want to say to those people is, you know, we can't get to that in a timely fashion because you know, we we can't get to that in a timely fashion because we, the the number of cases that each staff person has is unsustainable. So I, you know, I I fully support adding this position. I also, I'm curious whether the vacancies, the two, the two vacancies, whether that's a a red flag, that's something we should be concerned about, or it's just kind of the the natural cycle of things and and you don't have a lot of worry about being able to refill those positions.
So both of those positions have been recruited for and offered. So and we actually did get a really good candidate pool. And and we actually do have a third person that we'd like to make an offer to, provided that this position is granted. I'd like to further add that with the departure of, you know, 50% of our team, it's giving us a really fantastic opportunity to sort of sit down, look at how we do business, ways that we can improve efficiencies. Can we do it differently than we have in the past, which is always a question I keep on the forefront of my mind as we look at operations? And I can also kind of queue up for the next budget cycle. We're going to be looking at ways to improve our software system, Exela, so that code compliance and probably planning files are better able to be managed or more efficiently managed. I don't know what that means right now. We, you know, we're just really, we've really started these conversations yesterday. So so we really are kind of taking a look at the at the whole program from the ground level up and how do we want to do things? Where can we be different and more efficient?
If I could just offer, in addition to what what Sherry just said, is it a red flag? I think one person moved out of state for a position, so left the region. Another person had been retired from another position who was working on our staff and decided to to retire again. So to me, those are, those are not the red flags. But given the volume and complexity and contentiousness of the work, I think in order to successfully recruit and then retain new staff, I think the fifth code compliance specialist is really critical so that it's a manageable workload because they have been really stressed and really taxed. The best thing that can happen right now until we hire new people is to keep this snow on the ground because that keeps often the cases down during winter for at least a couple of months. It can be, it can be a quieter period in in code compliance before it begins to increase in spring, which is just the seasonal trends with the program.
Recruiting and getting the team together in this, you know, pre-spring time is probably the key to the whole operation. So with that, I'll move approval of the addition of one new code enforcement specialist position.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any further discussion?
I I would like to us to continue to think about how we pay for this work because, again, if 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 this work is really about maintaining quality of life for long term residents who are taxpayers and not about responding to things that have gone wrong with permits, then tying this so closely heavily to permit permit fee revenue, I don't think is the appropriate way to structure it.
Okay, Commissioner DeBon.
Yes.
Mr. Chang.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kyle, we promised the Health Department that they could be at 9:30, and it's 9:31. They're on a limited time factor with Dr. Johnson. Would you mind coming back? Is your morning flexible? I know it's a very brief process that you need to do this morning.
Sure, that's that's totally fine with me if if there's some other priority that needs to happen.
Okay, well, they just, they just reiterated yesterday that they really need to be at 9:30. So I'm hoping we could do that, and then we'll get back to you. So is the Health Department on, Stephanie? Thank you so much. Thank you, Kyle, for your your patience.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Nahad.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, and and my my apologies to Kyle as well for having to wait a bit longer. I'm sure he has important things to do as well, so I understand. But we do appreciate that you let us go at 9:30, given especially that we have colleagues outside of the county who are joining this call. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadr Azadi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. And I'm joined by several colleagues here. There, maybe I'll introduce them. And if it's okay, I have Dr. Rita Bacho. She is the Manager for Advancement and Protections section within the Health Department. I, we have Emily Freeland, who is our Supervisor for COVID Response and Resilience. I don't see Crystal here yet, but when Crystal does join us, Crystal Soli, she's our Vaccine Operations and Delivery Supervisor. And we have Dr. Michael Johnson. He is a Senior Data Scientist at the St. Charles Health System. Mike, I hope you don't mind that I introduce you. Okay, so I, before we get started, oh, I see Crystal here as well. I already introduced you, Crystal. Let me start by sharing my screen. I am going to assume that the technology on your side is sorted out and we are streaming already. I don't know if that's still happening or not, and if there is also translation already to that.
Yes, we're good.
Awesome. Great, 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 great. Okay, before we get started, I would also like to sincerely acknowledge a great colleague, Jesse Turpstra, who is one of those people who does a lot of work behind the scenes and rarely gets the public recognition and acknowledgement. She, once we, our epidemiologist, Jenny Faith, separated and joined another institute, Jesse stepped up and supported us with regards to COVID data management. And and she's going to have a more prominent role in the COVID data management in the coming year. She spent a lot of time putting the data and the slides together, and I just wanted to acknowledge her. So we hope that we have put together a sustained presentation focusing on the main points. We will be covering some of the new developments which inform our decision making in the in the county. And we have some EpiData, some operational information around vaccination and testing, followed by medical system updates, which will be given by Mike. So I don't know if everyone is aware, there is a new variant on the on the loose, Omicron. I think we had some discussions about this actually a few weeks ago. For the public, it's important to note that this is a variant of SARS-CoV-2, a virus that does cause COVID-19. But this particular variant has unusually large number of mutations and a significant number of which affect the spike protein, which is generally targeted by the COVID-19 vaccines. So just a couple of columns here on what we are still learning about this variant and what we think we can still do about it. Certainly, the incubation period, and this is the time where one is exposed to an infectious agent up to when we show symptoms. So that period of time seems to be shortened quite a bit with with relation to this variant. So the Alpha versus the Delta versus this particular variant, we are seeing progressively shorter incubation period of roughly two to four day range. Let's say median of three days. And that's important because that affects how quickly we're able to identify infection and prevent the infectious agent from transmitting the virus. So this can really truly affect our business model of containing transmission and this virus. We're also still learning about the transmissibility of this virus. And and that basically speaks to how efficiently this virus is able to link to the cell receptors and enter and be able to manufacture itself and then get spread. This particular virus from, or this variant of virus from what we're learning from CDC and other publications is that it does appear to be more efficient and contagious. One particular study shows that it spreads around 70 times faster than the previous variants. Interestingly so, it seems to be more of an upper respiratory, located in the upper respiratory rather than lower respiratory. And that could be correlated with some of the so-called mild symptoms that we are observing, though frankly, we're not sure if that's a reflection of the characteristic of the virus or the general immunity that we have in the population. But this, in terms of the severity of illness or disease severity, again, we quote unquote, we are hearing that those who have acquired the virus and experienced this variant seem to show mild illness. And at the individual level, that might be true, though we're still learning about it. But when we look at it from a population level and the impact of that, especially in our medical system, I don't think we can truly discount the severity of this illness or this disease. So that's something that we're still learning about and trying to understand better. Efficiency of existing treatments, I think what we are seeing is that, especially yesterday, there was information coming out of CDC and OHA that there's still one monoclonal therapy that seems to be effective. As we are all aware, monoclonal therapies are focusing on the S, the spike protein of the virus. So when there is significant change to the spike protein of the virus, certainly it's going to affect the effectiveness of the therapies that we have. Now, antiviral therapies are a bit different because they seem to, they generally focus on the mechanics of the cell. So they go inside the cell and and sort of work on the protease, which is different than the arrangement we have with the monoclonal therapies. We do have some effective therapies still in place which are responding to this variant, but we should also keep in mind that we're still collecting information on this. And last but not least, as expected, the, we're, we're seeing breakthroughs of those who are even triple vaccinated, and that's understandable because the vaccines, especially the mRNA vaccines, were designed to focus on the mRNA of the spike protein. With this current variant, it's it's not going to be as well aligned with the vaccines that we have. And certainly, it's going to escape our immunity and get into our cells and get us infected. However, what we are seeing is is that even though we're seeing so-called vaccine breakthroughs, A, booster doses seem to help the effectiveness of our vaccinated population. And B, there is still a layer of the unsung hero of our immune system, which is the cellular immunity, which is not necessarily captured by the breakthrough definition. And that's the part that really helps with reducing severity of illness and potential hospital admissions. So that piece is certainly still in play, and we're trying to learn more about it. So this is sort of where we are in terms of this variant. But what can we do about it still, given the information that I just shared with you? I think contrary to maybe to previous messaging that I have done, and coming from a, from a public health lens, certainly I have a population health perspective. Nevertheless, I think we're at a point in this pandemic where I would be encouraging all of us individually to do our own personal risk assessment. I do that right now. I have two elderly parents living with me right now. I am careful about going into indoor setting, even if I'm triple vaccinated, where people may not be masked. That is an assessment that I'm making on my own and making decisions accordingly. Some people may have underlying conditions, they might be going through cancer treatment, they might be immunocompromised, they might be living with people who are immunocompromised. People should make their own assessment based on the risks that they're facing. So that is the starting point for me, and that's the extent of my individual sort of health related advice. Beyond that, in terms of the population level, certainly getting vaccinated is better than none, and getting boosted is even better than receiving the primary doses. So that tool is still working despite this variant changing its characteristic in its spike protein because we are still hopeful about the cellular immunity, if nothing else. Certainly, wearing masks, surgical medical mask can 95, 95, depending on personal risk, the situation we're in, is still helpful. I do it, especially during winter where it's cold, it helps with my nose, if nothing else, keeping it warm. So that's, that is certainly a tool that we have. Physical distancing is still clearly working, and hygiene. And those are frankly transferable skills for even other respiratory diseases, not just COVID. Getting tested, the data that we have around testing shows that the antigen tests are still holding their own against this virus. Ultimately, the PCR or antigen, it really comes down to the amount of virus that we have at the moment of testing. PCRs do better with less virus in our bodies for longer periods of time. Antigens are quicker, and they are pretty helpful in identifying a period where we are infectious. A positive or a negative test should be taken with caution because there are some reliability issues. Especially with this variant, there is some reduced sensitivity that we are observing. And then seeking treatment, as I mentioned earlier, at least one of the monoclonal antibody therapies and the antiviral therapies that we have, treatments that we have, are effective. So if you're eligible or if you start showing symptoms or if you test positive, reach out to your primary care provider and discuss with them treatments that might be helpful in in helping you overcome this. Very quickly, I realize I'm taking a bit of time with these new developments, but we did have a bit of time off during the holidays, so I'm sure the public is interested to know the latest information. We learned yesterday, or not yesterday, sorry, one second, please. To make sure I have my information in order. Okay, so what we have here in terms of some new information coming out of FDA, CDC, and AICSLA, which is the advisory body to CDC today, we're expecting it. Booster doses for Pfizer vaccine are expected to be announced. That's from basically anyone over 12 years old. For Pfizer specifically, the interval between the dose and the booster, the second dose and the booster, is going to be shortened to five months. For Moderna and J and J, it will remain the same. Also, there was an announcement around immunocompromised children from five to 11, where they'd be eligible for additional dose after 28 days. So we do have some new developments in terms of booster doses. And it makes sense, especially given what we're seeing from Omicron, right? Because what we see is that a two dose series is only effective around 35%, whereas those individuals who are boosted are protected up to about 70%. So that means we're going to have breakthroughs with the antibody aspect of it. With the cellular aspect of it, it might be different, which is something, again, we're learning. And last but not least, before I hand over to Emily for some of the EpiData, consistent with what we're learning with Omicron, CDC is also looking at the science, looking at what's becoming, what's really realistic and practical, and revising its isolation and quarantine guidance. And the the details are provided here, which I'm not going to necessarily go through now, go through now. But bottom line, the two takeaways here is that there is going to be a shortened time period for isolation and quarantine with some caveats that we can certainly get into. And it's, it's the first time probably officially CDC is recognizing that its definition of fully vaccinated will probably have to include booster doses. So not necessarily a booster dose, which we have, we have going on right now, but frankly, in three months or six months, the fourth booster, the fifth, the sixth. So booster doses will probably be part of our set of toolkits that we have to take into account for people to be considered as protected as possible. So if there are no questions on these new updates, I will hand the floor to Emily for the Epi.
Thank you, Nahad, and thank you commissioners for having us this morning. As Nahad mentioned, and I think most of us are probably aware, our case counts are increasing and pretty significantly. This is a similar pattern that we've seen across the United States and frankly, the world with the surge surrounding probably Omicron paired with, you know, continuing Delta cases and our behaviors that changed during the holidays, which is something that we've typically seen even in previous surges. So last week, we had our highest record case count at 1,365 cases. And I think we will continue to see that increase. Our case numbers yesterday and the day before have been even higher than the week previous. So next week, we'll probably see an even higher number of cases. You can see the number of breakthrough cases here is indicated on the same graph and dropped slightly last week to about 35%. So again, high numbers and high breakthrough, or, you know, we see breakthrough cases, which is what we would typically expect with both Omicron and the fact that a large portion of our population is vaccinated. So we would see more percentage that are breakthrough. Next slide, please. So we also see that our test positivity is increasing. Again, we had sort of a lull in the last, the beginning of December, if you can call it a lull, of about 6% was our lowest positivity rate, and then we're back up around 19, 20% positivity rate with a high volume of tests being administered in our community. So probably some of you have seen and heard, you know, that St. Charles is running kind of a record number of tests. There's a lot of people in our community who are symptomatic and seeking out testing, which is what we're asking them to do. Kind of the unseen piece of this story that I would like to mention is the increase of at-home test kits that are being purchased in the community and people are taking at home. You know, you can get these antigen-type tests that Nahad mentioned, which are not perfect by any means, none of our tools are perfect tools, but they are tools to help us both assess risks, make informed decisions. And a lot of people are taking these at-home tests, which you can purchase online or at the pharmacy. There's even mail-in type of tests that are PCR tests. So this is the number of tests that we see reported through a laboratory, but there's also this whole bulk of tests that are not. So those are the main epi kind of updates that we wanted to go over today, just our case rates and our test positivity rates. And on to some testing and vaccination information.
Emily, could I ask a question, Emily? So if people are taking at-home antigen tests, we are not capturing that data either in our in our positive and negative tests, test positivity rate, or in our case numbers?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Except in very small circumstances. So we do have some people that call the hotline and would like to report. And then we can make presumptive cases off of that, which does capture those. But I would say it's a fraction of the number of cases that are probably being identified at home through that mechanism. The other place where it would be captured is if, like if I was a case, I went and got tested, and then my family, they took at-home tests. We may create presumptive cases from that because we have that link to that particular family or, you know, cohort of people who were positive through that mechanism.
But there's no direct link to our data sets. So what we know could be a gross underestimation of how much COVID there is in our community.
Correct. I would say for a variety of reasons, whether it's at-home tests or people choosing not to get tested or, you know, many reasons why this number is not probably a true reflection, but it's the best reflection that we have. But like Nahad mentioned, I think looking at our hospitalization numbers is really kind of the place that we need to be thinking about as far as metrics and public health, you know, where we are as a community. More looking at that hospitalization numbers, just because of the continual changes in how things are reported and how people are accessing testing and the choices they're making. I would say that I think our community is probably seeking out testing through a laboratory at a pretty high rate. I mean, I don't have the numbers to support that, but I think that we have a community that's trying to make wise decisions and make informed decisions. And we can see that reflected in our case data and the number of tests that are being administered and just the demand for testing, whether it's seen at, you know, those Curative sites or our urgent cares or the drive-through at St. Charles. Many, many people are continuing to seek out testing, which I don't think is replicated necessarily equally throughout the state or even the nation.
Okay, thank you.
So speaking of testing, you know, we do have these no-cost rapid PCR testing through Curative that we've partnered with OHA and COCC to have these sites. There's two in Bend, one is at COCC in Bend, one is at COCC in Redmond, and then there is one at the Leschwab Amphitheater. The Leschwab Amphitheater one is not a rapid PCR, it's a different one. And I would also just mention that I know this week, with the weather and some staffing issues, there's been some delays in opening just because of, you know, can't get the parking lot open or can't get our staff to those locations because they've been stuck at home. So we understand that, and people are working as hard as they can to continue to make this available resource in our community.
Emily, is there, so my impression is that there's actually supply constraints on, you know, test equipment, test kits nationally. And I'm definitely hearing from people in the community that they are shaking every tree, they're going to, you know, they're calling various clinics, they try to get an appointment with Curative, and, you know, there was nothing available for like a week. And, you know, that there are generally challenges with test access availability and accessibility. And I'm wondering if there's, you know, if there are these supply constraints nationally, if there's only a finite number of labs, you know, is there anything that we can be doing at the local level to improve the availability and accessibility of testing?
Yes, I think that, I mean, this week, I think that the problems were exacerbated by the weather, certainly. So just like we've had to cancel a couple of our vaccination clinics, and there were road closures that are, I'm hearing this morning, are potentially affecting the availability of vaccine at the drive-through clinic, which we're waiting to hear a little bit more on that. So I think certainly all of these issues have been exacerbated by, I would say unheard of increased demand for testing, as we can see in our numbers, as well as the weather and having to shut things down because of staffing issues. I know that, you know, St. Charles has two of the machines that they run this on. So I think from my understanding, it's more of a staffing problem and then getting things here and there. Of course, we would like to see more availability of any type of test. I think we're at the point where we would encourage people to take an at-home test. And I know that the state is working on, they purchased 6 million test kits, so that's 12 million tests that will be, start to be distributed as soon as possible. Those are the antigen at-home tests, and we should be seeing some of those in Deschutes County. You know, I think paired with the messaging to stay home while you're sick if you can't access testing, and kind of assume that there's a good chance it is COVID at this point, and that those isolation standards have been relaxed somewhat based on our better understanding of when someone is most contagious, that make it more, a little more reasonable for people to stay home just while they're experiencing symptoms in that first five days, rather than the longer isolation periods of 10 days. So I think that those things potentially can help us move forward. And, you know, we're certainly working on thinking of shifting staff around in different ways to help both beef up our vaccination efforts as well as testing efforts and, you know, supporting our community partners wherever we can in those ways. So, you know, we're, it's in process at this moment, working on thinking of how we can kind of shift things around to increase accessibility of testing, whether that be through, you know, programs of at-home testing or helping staffing issues with our community partners or, you know, through our own mechanisms.
Great, thank you.
Nahad, you have something to add?
Well, I think you alluded to this, and that's important. I think Commissioner Chang, your question within the broader system is something that we need to, as an, you as an authority and us as your sort of executive arm or technical arm, need to take into account. So currently, we're in a situation where, especially with Omicron, the containment is not feasible anymore. So probably, most likely, we all need to shift our public health goals of preventing transmission to reducing severity in hospital admissions. And there are different strategies and tools for that. We probably should be looking at a more passive containment effort rather than the active one that we've tried to have. And we're certainly not reaching everyone, even with the active arrangement that we have. Two, shifting resources, funding, staffing, time, energy, everything towards basically testing and vaccinating. Because those are the main tools that we have, and probably public education. Those are the tools that we have in reducing, you know, the progression of this disease, because preventing transmission is not feasible. So that's really one thing to consider. The other thing is, are there access and supply issues that we could as a health department have a role in pressing? There are always wins, you know, I want to acknowledge there are always wins that we can look at things differently and try to improve things, and we try to do that. There are also demand issues here. You know, it's not that we're in an environment where demand is at a steady rate throughout the year, where we know basically this is going to be the predictable demand and this is going to be the predictable supply, and is it at equilibrium or not? Unfortunately, life is not so straightforward, right? But we see instead is ebbs and flows and some heights in our demand for testing based on maybe upcoming events or holidays or football games or whatever it is. And then there are going to be some times where demand is well below the capacity that we have in the community. So that is something certainly that should also be factored in. Certainly, we can continue to increase demand, but there are going to be times throughout the year where the demand is going to be well below the access and supply, and it's going to be frankly somewhat inefficient and basic. So that, those are things that we're struggling with to better understand and figure out what that equilibrium looks like. But as soon as we try to understand something or we feel like we're almost there, oh, we have a new variant to deal with and a new set of circumstances, right? So again, it just complicates the matter. These are not excuses, these are just realities that all of us, I think, should consider in the way we're going to handle this pandemic at individual and population level. So if Emily, you're done, I'm going to hand the floor to Crystal for the next couple of slides.
Thank you, Nahad. Good morning, commissioners. So we'll move into some vaccine information. As Nahad mentioned earlier, the FDA approved this week booster doses for 12- to 15-year-olds with Pfizer boosts. And they also slipped in that piece about waiting a five-month span between the second dose and boost dose. So moving from six months to five months for those Pfizer folks. So we just continue to offer this throughout the community. As Nahad also mentioned, FDA approval is not the only piece in this puzzle. So the Western States Scientific Safety Review will meet today, and I anticipate that we'll actually be able to see these boosts for this age group in that timeframe late this week or early next week. Next slide.
Crystal, did you want to say a couple of words about the J and J availability and consent form?
Sure, sure. I think that there's been some questions in the community as to why we might still be offering J and J as an option. And if anyone's been to our clinics, we do have a one-on-one nurse council with folks who are interested in receiving the J and J vaccine. As we know, and as we continue to learn more about these vaccines, the mRNA vaccines Pfizer and Moderna has put out have been more of the gold standard of what we look at for this vaccine. But there are still reasons for people in our community who might need to get the J and J, particularly folks who have allergies to components of the mRNA vaccine. So after that council with the nurse, if it's still appropriate to provide J and J to that patient, we'll absolutely do that. We don't want anyone walking away without a vaccine who came to get one.
Thanks, Crystal. And the latest data we have is that certainly a booster dose of J and J is highly effective as well, so that is some good news. It doesn't mean breakthroughs won't happen, but it also might speak to the cellular immunity that I was speaking about earlier. So next slide.
And then this is a look at our weekly vaccination volume within Deschutes County. So the green bar, I tried to make this look a little bit different this week. So the green bar is the total amount of vaccines that were delivered, regardless of dose or manufacturer within our county. The blue piece is how many of those vaccines were administered by Deschutes County Health Services, whether it's our own team or teams that we might have contracted to go out and provide vaccine in the community. So we can still see that we're providing a significant percentage of the vaccines delivered on a weekly basis here in Deschutes County. Next slide. And this is just a reminder about our community pop-up clinics. We reference the website, and I would encourage everyone to go check our website at deschutes.org, the COVID-19 page, as it's going to have the most up-to-date information about dates and times for our clinics. I think this is also an important time to talk about inclement weather and how it affects some of our pop-up clinics. So many of the people who are involved in running these clinics are volunteers from our Public Health Reserve Board, and we want to make sure that we keep our staff, certainly, but our volunteers especially, safe in inclement weather. So as we're experiencing lots of it lately, I just would remind the public to check our website, make sure that the clinic that you're planning on attending is a go before you come down. And then also, you know, as Nahad spoke to briefly, we've got some wait times, we've got some demand that's sometimes exceeding our capacity. And just like other, you know, institutions in the community, we're having our own challenges, making sure that we have enough people to do the work that we have. So I would just also encourage the community members to come prepared to wait a little bit. That might mean a coat and rain boots or snow boots and an umbrella. It might mean different things for different clinics, but just come prepared to wait a little bit, and we're going to get to everybody. Most of the doses that we're providing right now, about 90% of the doses are boost doses, which is great news, especially given where we are in this Omicron outbreak. So next slide, unless anyone has any questions.
If I may just add to that as well, be discouraged from writing to us or calling us and giving us specific information around their experience and how we can improve some of our processes, that is always welcome. And the more specific you can be in your email or contact, the better for us. That way, we can hone in on that issue. General comments, certainly we take into account. However, I'm not so sure how we can translate general comments into corrective actions. So that's just a plea for my, for our community members in terms of informing us of how we can improve our services. The other thing around what Crystal mentioned is really around expectations. And I'm just going to be pretty straightforward about this, you know. When I went to the Ohio State game back in the fall, early fall, I stood in line for an hour and a half to get into the game, and I missed the opening kickoff. And this is a game that's been played for more than a century, and you figure by now, we have figured out how to get people into the stadium pretty efficiently, right? But it didn't happen like that. Now, so that's the football. And we waited an hour and a half and I didn't remember anyone complaining. The excitement was there and all that stuff. Here, we're talking about pandemic. We're talking about new vaccines, new processes, new protocols, staff shortages, everything else that goes with it. So what I want to communicate is that, yes, we're going to be facing some constraints. Some of those constraints we can try to address and do better. And your communication with us is helpful. Some of them we can't. And we just have to manage our expectations. This is not like going and buying milk, right? This is a vaccine, a vaccine that will hopefully protect us. This is a test that will hopefully give you knowledge and empower you to make some decisions. There'll be some wait time, there'll be some wait time, and we just have to factor that into our new way of life. So with that, I, we can maybe cover this.
Nahad?
Yeah.
Were you referring to the Ohio State game in September? Or the Ohio State game a week ago? When you waited in line for an hour and a half?
In September, commissioner.
Oh, you were at that game, okay. You mean where the Ducks won? We had to have one good, we had to have a highlight of the season, right? So that must have been it.
Yeah, my memory is not serving me well. I think it's my age, commissioner, and I don't remember what happened, but yes.
Well, it was the highlight of the Duck season, so yes.
And this last slide is just a reminder for community members who have questions. There's several spaces that you can go, deschutes.org, if you want to provide feedback. As Nahad mentioned, we're always looking for ways to improve the services that we provide. So calling the hotline or using that email address. I will say, just an important shout-out to some of our community partners who we've been operating clinics in their space for months now. Ben Metro, Parks and Rec. And the library systems throughout Deschutes County have been really wonderful partners. And some of the constraints that we deal with are really around space, around physical distancing, around, you know, those sorts of things. So we, I think we're at the point, we would welcome suggestions of community members who might have space ideas for us as well. So, thank you.
Michael, we can shift to you now. Thanks for your patience.
Oh, absolutely. And thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to speak with this particular group. I really appreciate it. I think that it's super important that we get as much information in everybody's hands as possible. And I just feel very welcomed. And I'd real also would like to say that this has been a great opportunity to collaborate with some of the great folks that work at the county. And I have learned a ton from many of the people that have been briefing today. And I think we're all better as a result of that. I want to start with just two quick comments. First of all, from a personal perspective, yes, it's important to have those expectations that you might stay a little bit longer in line than you would like to, to get an additional dose. But, you know, there, my wife went to the sister's firehouse last week to get her additional dose, her boost, and like went in there, saw friendly people, was right out. So it's not an absolute that you're going to spend a lot of time there, but it's a wise expectation that it might take a bit. But thank you for that. So my presentation does have a slightly different perspective just because of the context from which I work. I'm part of the St. Charles healthcare system. So I look at things from who is our patient base, which is primarily a tri-county region, although it does reach all the way into some of the other counties in Region 7. But, so some of the numbers that you're going to see here are from a tri-county perspective. And secondly, because I do work for the hospital system, I'm looking at things as they pertain to, you know, our hospitals and our resources. So some of my perspective is a little bit different. And even some of the way that I define things is slightly different. I'll try and highlight that. So here's the first example. I mean, in the tri-county area, you know, it's showing that we have this huge spike in the number of positive cases. And as of this morning, the seven-day count was over 2,000. So yes, it's still climbing. And it's not just the Omicron prevalence, but perhaps some other things that are happening in our community that are not helping the situation. And they're listed there on the side. The positivity rate was mentioned before and I want to just maybe make one additional comment on that. Yes, there are outside influences that make this less than perfect metric to monitor, but it has been fairly consistent over time. So a lot of those at-home tests perhaps might have been people who would not have gotten tested before. So maybe they aren't in the, so I, I don't know. I look at it over time as opposed to an absolute number. And over time, this positivity rate is very high compared to what it's been in the past. So I just leave it at that. And you can see the sources there for these two charts. So the next slide shows our predictive model. And when I build this model, it has a long list of parameters and assumptions that go into it. And I just can't emphasize enough that early on, when we're on the rise going into a surge, there's just some tremendous variability in like just how confident are we on the values of the parameters that are in the model? Nahad mentioned that in the very first slide of all the things that, what we know. Well, these are things that we need to know and we have good estimates on as time goes on, but we refine those estimates and we, and that does impact our future predictions for hospitalizations. So if, and let me just show you the level of sensitivity that we're talking about. If we're off by 10 percentage points on how much this particular variant evades our immunity, like either from vaccination or from national immunity or boosted or a hybrid of all of that, if we're off by just 10 percentage points, we could triple the number of susceptible people to this virus. And what that could do is like that curve to the right, you can add 50 beds to that. You know, so there's just a lot of, I won't call it guesswork. It's, we try and make informed decisions based on the data that are available. This is our best guess so far. And every day this week, I've been getting confirming information that I think that we have the parameters pretty darn close. But it would, it would actually surprise me if exactly what you see here is exactly what we experience. So next slide, please. There has been a lot of talk lately about how nice it is that the mortality rate, or excuse me, the number of mortalities has gone down. And you can see that for three months in a row, we've had a significant decrease in the number of people who are dying in the hospital system. Those are the only ones that are being represented here. And that's a great thing. But what I'd like to point out is a lot of that simply has to do with patient volume. And if you take a look at the mortality rate of hospitalized COVID patients, that still remains very high. So if you're in the hospital in the month of December, you know, 12.5% of those patients died. That's, that's a sobering statistic. And so I just don't want to, you know, everybody's talking about how the severity of Omicron is supposed to be less. Boy, wouldn't it be nice to see that mortality rate drop significantly? And I'm expecting it to. But it's more than just the number of people that die. So let's move on to the next slide. And I do apologize for how wordy this slide is, but there's a lot of information here. And as I speak to some of these bullets, I'll let you kind of read through this. There's a lot of treatments and these are reactive measures to somebody who has been exposed and positive and is aimed primarily at our, at the very most at-risk patients. So it's not something that everybody can rely upon. It's scrutinized and because of the supply, only gets administered to a small percentage of those who have a positive result with the test. We have received some of the oral therapies, one from Merck and one from Pfizer. But to give you an idea of the, just how short supply these are coming to us, we got 20 of the Merck and 60 of the Pfizer. And when we have over 2,000 positive cases in the past seven days, that doesn't go very far. So we have to, we have some very tough decisions on how do we get these things into the provider's hands to give to the best patients who would benefit the most from these? So that's a very scrutinizing process. And we are switching from the monoclonal antibody treatment that was effective against Delta. Now we have a new one for Omicron. But again, it's in short supply, but being used and being used effectively. So also, very recently, just in this week, we've got some long-term monoclonal antibody therapies for some of our cancer patients and that's being used in the Cancer Center. So I just wanted to highlight that because that's really good news. So the final bullet there is kind of the, I think, quite important and we do sound like a broken record, but you know, these reactive measures to counteract when somebody becomes positive are very important and successful when they're used. But the best way to do this is to be proactive and get that additional dose and vaccinations. And that'll keep you from getting, you know, a severe enough infection to where you may be needing some of these. And I'd like to thank Dr. Cynthia Marie for all of those comments because I'm just not, she's our clinical expert when it comes to that and she was very responsive when I asked her to try and explain this to me. But, okay, and this is my last chart. Just to kind of highlight the current effectiveness of our vaccinations. And here's where I really want to highlight perhaps a different perspective of my information based on what you saw before. Typically, when people talk about a quote breakthrough case, they're saying, okay, somebody who's been vaccinated. And I'm saying fully vaccinated now to include an additional dose or a booster. You know, you're, it's not just being positive with the infection. I'm only counting a breakthrough case that is hospitalized. Because again, those are the ones that are impacting our hospital resources. And you can see the chart on the left there. And I know the writing is small, but you can, it's quite obvious that the orange line down at the bottom for those who have been fully vaccinated is just a fraction of those who are hospitalized, who are unvaccinated. So it can still very, very much keep you out of the hospital. And the chart on the right is important too because, I mean, Emily mentioned this, that the more of our population that is vaccinated, the more we would expect a breakthrough case. And so there's a way that you can calculate and observe vaccine effectiveness that takes into account that proportion of the population who have been vaccinated. And you can see that that is, that is all the way through December, quite effective. Now, I completely understand that all the rules have changed as we go forward into January with Omicron. However, it is still being shown that if you have that additional dose, if you've been boosted, you really improve your chances of staying out of the hospital and not having to fight those statistics like the mortality rate of our hospitalized patients. So that's, that concludes all the information that I have. The next slide has some contact information. And I have received several emails in the past from this presentation and I welcome those. So if there's some additional questions that you have, please reach out. I think I'm pretty good about responding to all of them that I've gotten so far. So with that, thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Johnson, I wanted to go back to your prediction model slide. And I very much appreciate that there's a whole lot of very sensitive variables here. And, you know, I won't be holding you to this model. But I, my understanding is that Omicron arrived a little bit later here in central Oregon than it has in other parts of the state. And I'm curious whether, you know, so what people are saying is it's less severe, but just the sheer, because of the sheer number of cases, we are still seeing substantial amounts of hospitalizations. So is that what's happening in other parts of the state where Omicron arrived earlier? Is, you know, maybe a smaller percentage of the people with Omicron going to the hospital, but the smaller percentage of such a large number is still adding up to a lot of hospitalizations?
Yeah, Commissioner Chang, you bring up a couple of really good points and ask a very good question. You know, to be completely transparent with you, I am not absolutely certain of the prevalence of the Omicron variant at this point, especially in central Oregon versus other parts of Oregon. I've looked at the sequencing information just this morning. There was 11 specimens that were identified in Region 1. There was additional nine that were identified in Region 3. But those data are so old, they're a couple of weeks old. So everything is like, how fast has it spread everywhere else? How fast do we expect it to spread based on that information? And you are correct that it gets, in the past, the variants have gotten to central Oregon with about a three-to-five-day lag from when it hit in the valley. So that's kind of built into my model. I have some parameters that say, when was it 1% prevalent? And how long is it going to take until it becomes the dominant variant? And that's kind of how all these other things are keyed. And so what you see here is a slightly delayed peak from what Peter Graven might have for the state overall. But you're right. I just keep a very close eye on what we think is, this is due to Omicron. Or to be honest with you, this very, very slight dip that we've seen in the past couple of days could still be just leftover Delta and from the holiday season. The timing is just about right. I don't really think we've seen that, we need to have that three-to-five-day lag from those positive cases jumping up before we see those hospitalizations. And I just don't have good data on the sequencing at this point. Sorry for the long-winded response, but.
Yeah, but we are seeing hospitalization. I guess one other way to ask this question is, are we seeing hospitalization rates rise in other parts of the state faster than we're seeing them rise here?
I don't want to misspeak. I can share a link for the HOSCAP data, but I believe so. I believe the others are starting to come up and we haven't started to come up to that degree quite yet. But I really think that this is the calm before the storm and we'll know a lot in the next week. But I certainly expect to see the rest of the state come up. But my meeting is not until tomorrow that I meet with all those other data scientists from around the state in OHA and I'll get an update then, so.
Great, yeah, I would love to hear back on that later.
Happy to follow up with you and I'll send you an email later this week when I get that info.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so I have a little bit of data here. I don't know if that is what you're looking for. But as of December 20th, this is probably old data, as Dr. Johnson said, but it may be relevant to just extrapolate. As of December 20th to 21st, it was detected and it was at 22% according to the sequencing. So Ben was at a log of 5.52. As of December 27th and then December 28th, we're at 5.57. So that translates to about 22% of Omicron and then the rest of it was mostly Delta variant. We had about 20%-ish in Sun River and Redmond wastewater. We haven't detected any Omicron yet. So that is the data we have currently. It's a little bit. It's a little bit outdated, but maybe that would help extrapolate.
So, yeah, I would just clarify that a tiny bit and make sure that everyone understands those are wastewater sequencing. So this is not sequencing like through patients or positive tests, but 22% of those wastewater sequences. And then the numbers that we saw that Rita mentioned, the log, you know, 5.52, that's a scale that we've been measuring wastewater and how much, you know, coronavirus we see in the wastewater. And it is one of the highest levels that we have seen throughout the pandemic. I think it's the highest numbers that we've seen as far as that scale and that measurement. But those numbers did come from December 20th, 21st ish time period. So just to put some clarifications there.
And so the snapshot, so the snapshot from that, that December 20th was that 20% of, it did seem like 20% of the, of the COVID in wastewater was Omicron. Is that, did I catch that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Two quick comments. Number one, that puts it kind of in line of my estimated timeline. Think I have it at like 25% this week, just on my initial guesses and the initial, or the current parameters that are in the model. So if that's the case, then we're not off by too much. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was, I had a moment to go to the OHA side, and Commissioner Chang, you are correct, there, Regions 1, which is in the far northwest, Region 2, that is just below that, and Region 5, that is also on the west side, but down in the south, those three very populated regions are showing more of a significant rise in hospitalizations in the past week than, than we have here in Region 7. Region 3 is kind of about the same as us. They're, they're also on the west side, but not seeing the, the kind of increases that everybody else is over there.
Great, thank you.
Well, per the report from the state as of yesterday, it said Region 7 had 28% of their ICU beds available, and that, Region 9 had 40%, but we were definitely at the better end of that. The fact that we have, what, 29 in the hospital today on the report, and I noticed you've got it projected to be at the highest point in, I think it's March 4th. You know, with the, what is our count of 1,300, which is really the highest it's ever been, you have that projected though at 95. Is that because this is not as significant as the Delta variant? Is that why it's less?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. There's, it's, it's like this balloon that you push in in several ways, and when you push in one way, it comes out the other. But that, that high peak is based on several things. One, the, the prevalence of the, of the Omicron variant and when we see that happening, and I think that we're on track there. The transmissibility as it relates to, you know, all people, the severity, which is how many people end up in the hospital. But also part of that severity is a length of stay, and I've decreased that slightly for the Omicron variant, so that also impacts it. And so, yeah, when you put all those things together, this is what the, the model is telling us. And it's been fairly well behaved in the past when we, when we adjust those parameters. And, and it's been a long time since, perhaps I've mentioned this aspect of our modeling, but I really only have like a lot of confidence in my estimates that go out about three weeks. And that peak that is around the first of March is well beyond that. So that's going to move a little bit. But when I look back at the accuracy of our models since the beginning of the pandemic, we've done pretty well if we stick to that shorter window. And I've been told from our administrators at the hospital that that gives them enough time to allocate resources for staffing and for beds and additional things. So that's, again, I don't have much of a long-term perspective, but I know that that's necessary to put something out there. Does that help?
Yes, definitely. It was just good to see that we were on the end with a greater percentage of available beds at this moment.
Yeah, and, you know, I, you know, the day-by-day thing just fluctuates tremendously. I, you know, there are days, there's been days this past week, you know, that we, you know, were in the red for hospital beds in the ICU, and then a couple of days later, we're not. So that does fluctuate tremendously day by day. When I smooth that out over time, we still, here in Region 7, when we're 8% of the population, we only have 4% of the ICU beds occupy, or ICU patients for COVID. So we're underrepresented there. So we're doing pretty well for the very, very extreme cases currently, and that hasn't been the case just a couple of weeks ago. So I think it's really important not to get hyper-focused on, what is it, today, but what, what are the trends that we're seeing?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Are there any more questions?
No questions. Thank you very much for the update.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Nahad, and your entire team.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. If, if I could just wrap it up with the, thank the team here. Thank you for inviting us. I think what's important to me and my team, and Mike, I'm sure, to acknowledge is that behind those numbers are humans and human faces. There are parents there, there are daughters there, there are sons there, there are grandparents there, sisters, brothers. Yeah, these are not just numbers here. And a person who is admitted to the hospital has a ripple effect on its families and the overall community. And I think, although it's good for all of us to question data and try to understand information better, it's really critical that we all stand united against this virus and against misinformation and conspiracy theories, frankly. And I'm hoping, and my wish for all of us, the commission, all of us here, is that we're giving accurate information and messaging to our communities so that they're encouraged to make good decisions and undertake behaviors that protect them and their loved ones and neighbors in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nahad. And thank you to your team.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, in two weeks. Okay, so is Kyle available? Good morning, Kyle. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, of course, no worries. For the record, Kyle Collins, Associate Planner. Hopefully, this will be a relatively short item. I am back here before you today for a second reading of the housekeeping amendments, just to provide a little bit more background here and refresh the commissioners. We had a public hearing on these housekeeping amendments, which are just general amendments. They come up more or less on an annual basis to correct minor errors that we find in the code and to incorporate changes made at a state level into our local ordinances when needed. During that December 15th public hearing, all three of the commissioners voted in favor of approving the proposed housekeeping amendments that were presented by staff and went forward with a first reading in name only of that ordinance. There was a second ordinance that was actually adopted by emergency, and that became effective as of two days ago on the third. But this is for the second portion of those housekeeping amendments that covers the broad majority of, of the remaining proposed changes. With that, I can open it up to any questions that the commissioners might have.
Are there any questions? Seeing no questions. Do we have?
Proceedurally, you need a motion for second reading by title only, and then you'll need a motion after that for adoption.
So is it, is the, is the motion for approval of second reading by title only, or is the motion to hear?
The motion would be to move second reading by title only of Ordinance 2021-013.
Okay. I move, I move hearing of, or I, I move second reading of the proposed ordinance by title only, and that ordinance number is 2021-013. Is that?
That's correct.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Okay, so now we need another.
You could just read the, the title of the ordinance there, the.
Okay. An ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 15, Buildings and Construction Title 17, Subdivisions Title 18, Zoning Ordinance Title 19, Ban Urban Area Zoning Ordinance and Title 22 Procedures Ordinance to Incorporate Changes to State and Federal Law and Provide Clarification of Existing Regulations, Procedures, and Policies. Ordinance number 2021-013.
This time, I'll move adoption of ordinance number 2021-013.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Approving ordinance number 2021-013.
Some.
Do I need to read the whole name again? No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle.
Yeah, of course. Just as one final piece here, these amendments will become effective as of April 5th, so in a couple of months, the, the normal adoption timeline.
Great. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you for your flexibility this morning.
Of course, no worries.
We appreciate it.
Have a great day.
Looking at our agenda, we have other items?
Yes, commissioners, we have a few items at least. David Givens has, has a topic. I don't know if you want to discuss it now. I have, Whitney has something.
All kinds of stuff.
All kinds of stuff. I will start just before you do that. During the meeting, we did receive an email from the League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties notifying us that we have been selected as one of the pilot projects in the legislation for creating a joint office on homelessness. So there were a dozen or so applicants. I can't remember, maybe more than that, maybe up to 15 or so. So I'm just sharing that news with you. We received, and the commissioners also received a copy of that email and the draft legislation. So we'll be looking at that quickly. They're asking for some comments by Friday. Of course, I haven't had a chance to review that, but just sharing that news with you. So with that, I know that David, Whitney, maybe Greg, is just here in case there's questions about other topics.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. Been working with Deschutes County Health Services on an audit of case investigation and contact tracing, and have been working through with our legal counsel on trying to get the data. I need to work on that audit. It's one of those things where our staff and our, and our department has been putting information into a state system, and now we'd like to get some of that data out of the state system. And so the state just, you know, arguably wants to make sure all their i's are dotted and t's are crossed. And so one of the things that our county council has, has suggested is working through an agreement with the county as the county health authority, deeming me to have the, be their agent for this audit and to also make sure that I assert the fact that I will protect any confidential information that I receive, which, you know, is of course what they are interested in as well. So again, that's required by our code. It's also required by my professional ethics in a number of different areas, but this would be an agreement between us saying that this will happen and help us maybe move this, move the state to providing us the information we requested. Any questions?
Just for clarity, so is the local public health authority, the Board of Commissioners, basically writing a letter or signing something authorized?
Yes, I provided a, a letter for an agreement for signature from the board, as the chair of the board, and I will sign it also just, just to reflect my adherence to that, that those statements, so.
So then a set of data will have private health, personal health information, or whatever the terminology, but it'll all be anonymized in a report anyways by the audit?
Yeah, the, the information I've requested, I don't deem to be personally identifiable information. They consider anything they haven't published to be protected, so they're, they're skewing on the, on the more cautious side. Again, I'm working through information that our staff and our departments normally have access to. It's just them sharing it with me kind of raises the bar in their, in their mind, so they just want to make sure it's all covered.
Right. I can tell you, we've previously, we've been working with the DOJ attorney on this, and we previously solicited a letter from Dr. George as the local public health administrator, which we provided to DOJ, and we're hoping that that would be sufficient. We think statutorily it is, but they pushed back and said, well, we need something more. We need to know that this Mr. Givens is actually an agent of the local public health authority. I think it's a bit much, frankly, but it's easier to just get this documentation from you folks than to really press that statutory issue with the DOJ. OHA really protects their ORFIA system, and all of our data gets dumped into their ORFIA system. And I think this is just part of that practice of, of protecting the integrity and the propriety of that system. And so they want us to dot every i and cross every t imaginable. And so that's what this hopefully final letter in this process is. As David's indicated to the OHA staff, I've indicated to the DOJ attorney, we're not looking for identifiable information, we're looking for just raw data, and that didn't seem to be sufficient for them, at least to this point. So that's ergo the reason for this request of a letter from you folks.
If we want to proceed with an audit right now, then I, I would support signing this letter, but I, I do want to raise questions about the value of pursuing this audit at, at this moment. Yeah, as we have a sense, our, you know, our, our health services staff is pretty maxed out in COVID response right now. So the, the question is, if we're going to be pulling, you know, human resources out of health services to be able to respond to an audit, I'd like to know that it is, you know, what value it's going to provide for us. And the, the other thing that, that's, you know, kind of driving my, my questioning of this right now is, you know, my understanding is that OHA is, is going to be moving towards, you know, a different approach to COVID moving forward in the next, you know, and probably in the next few weeks. An approach that, you know, is, Nahad sort of, you know, alluded to this today, but an approach that's more focused on preventing severe cases and hospitalization and, you know, is, is less of an effort to prevent transmission because, you know, at this point, people who want to get vaccinated, people who want to wear masks, they're, they're, they're doing it or they're not. And Omicron is just so transmissible. It's, you know, that our, our capacity to really effectively prevent transmission is, is pretty diminished. So if we're not, you know, if moving forward, we're not going to be doing as much case invent, or there's not going to be as much emphasis on case investigation and contact tracing, is it really time-sensitive for us to, to do this audit right now? So I, it, so, you know, David, could you explain?
Oh, sure.
Some of what your understanding is of what, you know, what the goals and value of, of doing this audit are and what it could do for us right now to be, you know, to improve our, our COVID response?
Sure. Commissioner Chang, these, these are, these are great questions, and these are questions that the department asked while I was starting into this audit. You know, was this the right time? Do we, you know, how is this going to benefit us? Do we have staffing that can support the audit? And again, I've been working with Nahad and before, Part B, George, George Conway, to kind of iron out those and those expectations and what, what the audit is and what it isn't. I mean, I think an audit provides value before, during, and after any kind of big situation. And so I think we were coming on. And so I think we were coming off the November, December surge when I kind of started this process. And again, I wasn't aware until just recently, the OHA's new move potentially to centralize some of the call taking and case investigation. That does put a wrinkle into it. But again, I think what you still gain from an audit is a perspective as to, and again, this audit is kind of honed in on the looking at the management of how we handle labor for these surges and flows of a pandemic. So how do we, how do we manage that? How do we look at, when do we add staff? When do we pull back on staff? How do we manage that, that case level, that cost? So, I mean, again, we have some significant costs that go into this over time. But how do we manage that? And what kinds of things should we be looking at in order to better attune ourselves to those, making the right decisions at the right times? And so again, been working with the department. I'd say a lot of the heavy lifting and time that they've spent with me has already been done. Pretty much it's this data. I've done a survey of the documentation. I've talked to staff. I've worked through some of the numbers in the department. This last piece is probably the biggest piece, but it's looking at information on case activity down to the case investigator level and trying to figure out, well, how much work? How much productivity are they doing? How is that working? How's that line with costs and the case volumes? Again, I think it provides a tremendous amount of feedback to the department, which, which they have not, you know, due to the strain, like you said, capacity and work, they haven't been able to do internally. So again, I'm working with the department to provide this extra resource. And I think it's still very valid. I think they're going to have to figure out how they scale down. There's lots of temp labor that they're using to kind of address COVID. It can be used in those kinds of situations as well. So again, no, I, once I get kind of into something, I kind of want to finish it. And again, I realize they're changing maybe models, but I think this will still be of great value to them. And the department has been supportive of the timing and even during COVID, so.
Oh, yeah. No, I wanted to talk with them a little bit about this. And, you know, they said that they supported it, and they said that they've been, you know, engaging and trying to provide you with all the information that you requested. I'm just concerned about whether this is an appropriate time to be asking, you know, putting those kinds of staff demands on, you know, in a world of wildfire, you do an after-action review when a fire is over, not in the middle of the fire. So I mean, if you're saying that the vast majority of the work that you are demanding of them has already been done, I would feel a little bit better about moving forward with this. But if not, I mean, if there's going to be, you know, substantial demands of staff time right in the middle of the Omicron surge, I really have to question whether this is an appropriate time to do this.
And I'd say first and foremost, yes, I will, I'm very flexible in terms of timing with them. And I've been very clear to them. We originally had a benchmark that we'd get down to the 350 case per week number, which seems low now, right? And they said, no, we want to move forward. They had some, some timing of staff absences and things like that. They thought that they could support the audit. I still think that's the case. And I think the level of support I need from the department is at the low level now. They'll have to respond to the audit report. They'll have to kind of help me with maybe if there's some specific findings, some observations, and maybe help with, of course, you know, tuning the recommendations and making sure that they're relevant. But I think those are things well within, you know, a modest amount of time. So again, I'm also very lenient with any department that needs additional time because of extra stresses. And believe me, I will let them have as much time as they need because of COVID. So I really want to make sure that they get the information that I've worked on, the data, the analysis, into their hands so they can make changes as they go. That's probably the big benefit of doing things, you know, during something is to be able to modify and be aware of some of these, these things that could improve operations. And so that's, you know, I, when I, as an auditor, think about what can I provide benefits to the organization from being in the middle of a pandemic and trying to, this is what my colleagues are doing. They're doing these audits of things that are happening now so they can provide input. We know it's not a perfect world. We know things are changing rapidly. But there's always lessons learned. And if we can get some of those into the hands of the departments, they'll hopefully be better equipped to meet the next need that comes up, whether it's a surge or a new change in program. They'll be thinking, maybe some of the tools that are, or recommendations I've given them maybe help them along the way. So that's all I can do is hope and try to keep the impact to them as little as possible.
I mean, I very much appreciate the desire to help people, you know, get insight and improve. It's just, you know, we are in the middle of responding to a crisis. It's not, it's not like ongoing processes at the DA's office that's like, okay, well, it'd be, you know, while you're doing your work, it would be helpful to have some insights on your work. It's, I really do compare it much more to, you know, a wildfire. And they do the after-action review when the wildfire is over. Because people are busy responding to a crisis and throwing everything they've got at it while it's, while it's happening. So, okay, I'm comfortable proceeding. Any other questions?
There's a proposed letter. Do you want us to take a look at it?
Yes. Is the letter here?
I sent it to you guys.
Yes.
This is another copy?
Sorry, yep.
I read it. Yes, I saw it. And I'm comfortable in signing it. And, you know, they did have, you know, we were down to like 50 cases a day for, you know, a bit. And now, of course, things have really shot up again. So it seems like Mother Nature really has her own agenda here. And it's always good to, you know, to go in and look. And coming from your perspective, I think is really, could be enlightening for what we're doing. So I appreciate that you are tackling this in a most sensitive way.
One question for the data system of the state. Are you going to be requesting specific data? Or are you going to have access to the system to, you know, kind of?
I ask them to, you know, I could do both ways. I ask them to provide me the data or provide staff the support to provide the data, because that's how this all started. Our staff, county staff at health services contacted OHA for support to pull data for the audit. And that's when this kind of.
Yeah, that's where it was going to go. And they said, the auditor. And they said, well, wait a minute. Okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Yeah, no, I'm supportive, just learning about this. So I'll move Chair's signature of a letter for the County Internal Auditor as Agent of Deschutes County for access to state public health information.
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So is this the letter I actually sign?
Could be.
Okay. All right, I've got a blue pen.
All right.
There you go.
Thanksgiving.
So, yeah, if the email was sent yesterday, I was busy shuffling snow like all day. It was amazing yesterday, so.
Heavy snow.
My shoulders are sore. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. I have for the board's consideration a draft letter of support for Mountain Star Relief Nursery. This is a request that came in from their executive director last week. And it's specific to the Mountain Star's new satellite location in Lapine. This is a letter to the Oregon Association of Relief Nurseries. And apparently there's a funding process where Mountain Star can certify the Lapine site and begin to receive funding for their new certified satellite site in Lapine beginning at the start of the fiscal year 23 state biennium. So this is, I'll pass out this draft, which I emailed earlier this week. But this is essentially a letter from the board indicating support for Mountain Star to receive that funding. It also highlights the board's recent investments in childcare across the Deschutes County region, $600,000 of which went to Mountain Star, which will support this site as well as their site in Redmond, as the board is well aware. So for your consideration, Mountain Star has requested that if the board moves forward and does want to provide this letter of support, that we provide it back to them by the end of this week. So I'll hand this out.
Yeah, and Mountain Star has been working towards this for a while. Lapine's been mentioned over the years. So I'm supportive of, you know, trying to help them move forward on this specific location. They do have bend activities. They're in Redmond now. And Southern Deschutes County would be a great place to complement their services.
And they provide such an important service in our community. You know, this is, this is a proactive intervention that prevents a whole lot of trauma and stress for families in our community. And I'm very excited to see this project moving forward. I'm also really glad that we, I thought that we didn't just mention the ARPA allocation, but we also mentioned other support that we provide to Mountain Star.
Yep. This draft also mentions the board continued support through the service partner funding that comes as a result of their video lottery allocation. So some strong support for Mountain Star through a variety of processes.
I think I was actually at a meeting in Lapine pre-COVID regarding health childcare in Lapine and how it was, and this was pre-COVID. So, you know, this seems very appropriate, timely. And thank goodness, you know, they're going to expand.
So I move board approval of this letter in support of Mountain Star becoming, you know, being recognized by the Oregon Association of Relief Nurseries.
Is there a second?
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you. We'll modify this and remove the watermark and place it upstairs for your signature. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
The other item that I was, I wanted to raise was potential investments in some of the homeless facilities that have submitted ARPA requests to us in the last few months and some in the last couple of weeks. I know we have our standard ARPA allocation discussion next week. And this can all wait until then if we so choose. But just, you know, I think we're all very aware that the weather has been pretty severe last few weeks and the time sensitivity of some of these projects, giving them a, you know, another week of lead time, you know, to know that they have the resources to move forward with some of their projects, you know, I think would be very valuable. So that the ones that I, that I saw on the list in particular that I, that I wanted to discuss were the St. Vincent's Place Project in Bend, the Shepherd's House Kitchen in Redmond. And I, I did, I would like to discuss the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter a little bit more. There was a, it was a two-part, that one was a two-part request. And Greg and Dan had sort of had kind of classified, if I understand correctly, you were sort of classifying it as a needs assessment and saying that a needs assessment was not necessarily eligible for ARPA funding. But honestly, I think a lot of what they proposed was more like a design process. I mean, and, you know, a design process can be, you know, really nuts and bolts, you know, like, you know, the, you know, our geological survey of the site is this, the engineering says that, you know, we can deal with wastewater. But, you know, for a facility like they're talking about, you know, the design is really about, a huge amount of the design process is about community compatibility. And that was what a lot of their scope of work was about, was trying to understand, you know, what fit, you know, what fit kind of community preferences, cities preferences and things like, you know, how they would operate such a facility. So I saw it, you know, I saw their, their, their planning process more as a design proposal. And I guess if it was framed in that way, I wanted to ask whether we thought it might be, you know, whether that might be eligible.
Sure. Greg Munn, County Finance. So the only, you know, we looked at this in depth. And just to make sure that we were not missing anything. And the only feasibility type work that's eligible under ARPA is underneath the infrastructure component. So water, sewer, and broadband. There's no provision for feasibility work elsewhere. In addition to that, in conversations with the, with the shelter folks is that this is preliminary to any sort of feasibility work. This would be preliminary planning, preliminary community consensus work. And so that was just another identification of the scope of the work. It wasn't even a feasibility. It was, you know, what are the, what are the community needs? How's the community feel about it?
So are you saying that is actually not ARPA eligible? Is that the bottom line?
That's right. It's not eligible.
It is not eligible. Okay. And St. Vincent's, they're what? Are they asking for 130,000?
135,000.
35,000. Okay. How coincidental that I would meet the gentleman Monday at the bank and who worked at Sotera. And, you know, Sotera's been in some of our information about the homeless in Juniper. And we were having this discussion. And then he actually said he, he's part of this project. He's working on this project. And I said, oh, my gosh, we should be helping you. And I gave him my card. So, you know, how appropriate that that would come up today. You know, they're, they're really talking about doing a two-year program, very similar in that respect to the Veterans Village. And I told him how we were told by Clackamas that really 15 is the max that you want to do just because of personalities. And anyway, so it was just, you know, one of those random chance meetings. But I'm really happy to see that it's on our list with funding that. And if, I know that they're asking for this funding from the community. In fact, I heard there was an ad today. So, you know, I would be happy with funding that today.
They're, yeah, they're, they're very close.
Right.
You, very, very close to opening, I mean, the timeline that that project has been constructed, not to compare with the, you know, with the, with the Veterans Village, but it was extremely fast. And, you know, the tiny shelters are up already, the community building is, or the, you know, common building is almost done. They're, they're going to be able to move people in, you know, during, you know, during this very severe winter that we're experiencing. And so to be able to help them get to the finish line with, you know, support for the fencing and security system that they, that they're going to need, which, you know, we have all recognized that though, that's an integral part of any kind of a, you know, hosted homeless facility is, is having adequate security and safety. I, you know, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to come in, again, you know, sort of like with the Bethlehem and in Redmond, at the tail end of the project and, you know, add final dollars to get them to the finish line.
I'm supportive also. I mean, yeah, if we want to start that process or make that motion, let's do it.
Do we, I mean, their, their proposal was, it was two pieces. There was the, you know, the capital costs, you know, 40,000. And then they, they did make a request of $85,000 for first year operating costs. And, you know, I, I 110% support the capital cost. I could see if we wanted to, you know, discuss the operating cost component. But, you know, I think it would be reasonable to do that. We are coming in at the very, at the very end of this project. And, you know, I, I do believe that they have made. involved, so, you know, if we didn't want to, you know, cover their whole first year operating costs, then...
You said 40,000 and then 85,000 for operations? So that's 125,000.
135, or sorry, was it?
I think their overall request was 135,000.
Yes.
So I have the letter from...
Yeah, what I wrote down was 40 and 85, but...
And that makes it 125.
But you're right, that only adds up to 125.
My mental math is...
But Greg, does that match what's in the letter, 40 and 85, or?
I don't have the letter in front of me. Dan, do you have the letter? I see on the screen there.
Sounds like our number just might have magically, I mean, 125 would be a great number to offer, because just like you're saying, I mean, fully funding a first year of operation is generous, we do have dollars that are available like this, the community, we want to see strong partnerships, but this will really empower that operation. Any kind of dollars that can roll over to the next year and then fundraising and getting people through the system.
Yes.
And there was, there was $10,000 for landscaping, so that's the additional.
Oh, there it is.
Okay. Okay, so more than, more capital costs.
I did speak with the owner of this proposal as well, but Link and I personally was impressed with his plan, working with Pacific Source and other individuals for operating costs ongoing, to cover those costs, just as a add in there.
Thank you, Dan. So do we have a motion then?
When I was kind of concluding, 125 may be the right number, knowing that the operational, I bet there's a community support for fundraising, any other operational needs.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion, support St. Vincent de Paul, is it Tiny Home Village, or I don't know if there's a name to it.
St. Vincent's Place.
St. Vincent's Place, okay, there we go. In the amount of $125,000 supporting capital needs plus operating costs.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Okay, well, if we're done...
I just wanted to clarify, we're funding that at 125, the proposal was 135, but we're going with 125 is the approved motion, correct?
Correct.
And if we're done talking about the Sisters Cold Weather Shelter for now, then, well, I guess the one other thing I would say about that is if they need $10,000 to plan their long-term operations, I, and it's not ARPA eligible, I hope that we can be creative and think about funding it in other ways, because...
Well, yeah, and that's certainly an option. The other, the other point that I had the conversation with the cold weather, or the shelter folks yesterday was that there might be some coordination benefits through the new formation of the Joint Homeless Office. So I think they might be looking at that as well.
What about the Shepherd's House, the kitchen in Redmond? You brought that up.
Yeah, so I wasn't aware of it at the time, but I guess they submitted a request in October.
They did.
And I would have been very supportive at that time, and I'm still supportive now of helping to get that, that project moving forward. They need, they asked for $300,000 towards, you know, getting their kitchen completely set up, which is, I, yeah, they asked for $300,000 sort of getting their kitchen set up, that facility is already functioning as a day shelter right now during, you know, these very cold months, and particularly the very cold weeks we had, you know, the last few weeks. And, you know, anything we can do to accelerate getting that operation, or, you know, getting that facility to operational, fully operational, I think, is a good investment for our homeless neighbors in the Redmond area.
And I was talking with Dave Notori a couple of weeks ago, and he was explaining to me that they're actually in a capital campaign to double their facility in Bend, and they do have a facility right now for women and children, it's only serving nine, and they're hoping that they can expand that number to 20. So, you know, they, they've been here, they have an excellent track record, their program is great, and I believe I did meet the man that's supposed to run this kitchen at an event this last summer. So, you know, it seems like it does, it makes sense.
Shepherd's House is a really critical service provider in this, in this universe of keeping people sheltered and fed and warm.
So, yeah, having a, an organization who is ready to go, ready to implement, doing the job right now, and with the American Rescue Plan dollars, it's really a good fit and a great opportunity. So Shepherd's House had applied in the past, and it was during the time we were talking about the Bethlehem investment in Redmond too, so everybody just kind of backed off. So that's why this is coming around again, so I'm supportive.
I told Dave to resubmit it a couple of months ago, we really hadn't talked about it, but I said, hey, send it back in, because the track record of Shepherd's House is, you know, it's at the top. They do, they do excellent work.
So, yeah, I'm supportive also.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I move, I move allocation approval of $300,000 for Shepherd's House for their kitchen in, at their new Redmond facility.
And I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Those were the three that I really wanted to discuss today.
So, yeah, Senior Center in Lapine has sent a letter, I don't know if we all got it or I got it recently, and they're just asking for operational dollars, they're just in a spot where, you know, they're providing meals and they're doing activities, but there's nothing really revenue generating like in the past. So there, and there may be other organizations like this too, but this was a specific letter from Lapine Senior Center. So I'm just mentioning it now, it'll come up again, I'm not prepared for an amount or anything today. But it is that concept of, you know, they're really, they're keeping the doors open, they're providing services, but the, the income and expenses are not matching up like they did previous to COVID, so, I mean, they can really kind of map it to that. So I don't know, does that fit into like a category, or have, so as I say, there's probably other organizations just like that, and even private businesses just like that. So that's why I'm hesitant to...
There is a, there is a Council on Aging proposal as well, so I'm curious whether there's, whether there's any interface between the Senior Center and the Council on Aging on services or not.
And as I say, so I asked him a little bit more about, okay, what, you know, what does the future look like? I guess that's where I was going, you know, is this going to be a structural change in, you know, how are you going to keep the doors open long-term? They said, well, really, they are seeing it as a COVID issue, you know, just, and they had Bingo Night, and they had, you know, the car, car show in the spring, which I think they did, but it's just a lot smaller. So a lot of things are just different right now. So they are looking for resources to kind of get through for another, another cycle.
So there is one, there is one item, there's a project request on here from the Council on Aging in Redmond Senior Center, that sounds very similar to that.
Yeah.
And I do recall that proposal, that's on the list here, so that's...
Group a couple of those together for a discussion.
Can we do that, could we do that next week? I know, I was asked by the director for the Redmond Senior Center, she was saying, you know, with food inflation, it is so bad now, and I said, well, we knew that there were 21 different organizations that were getting donations because, you know, of our beef donation that we did. They said that they provided 21 different organizations in Deschutes County with that beef. Okay, so how do we help those people with their buying power? And she's, you know, they are working so hard, and it's really hard when you don't, it's just like going to Target versus going to your little family market, and the buying power of Target is one side of the occasion, you know, and you go, wow, but the other side is helping these groups get together so that they can actually streamline and become more cost-effective on what their, you know, food. Everything is going up so much.
Well, and I'm at a point where, you know, I'm thinking, I do want to ask back, okay, what does it look like a couple of years from now? You know, how, if there's rescue funds or, you know, a carryover dollars to be able to get you through, is there a path to get back on track, or at least acknowledging that the future may be different than the past? So, you know, let's start thinking like that. Just as an opportunity for...
Commissioners, I would just say that insofar as the Lapine Senior Center has a nonprofit, they would also be eligible to apply through COIC for nonprofit small business, recuperation of net profit loss due to COVID-19, which it sounds like that's what you're talking about, a loss of revenue and expenditure staying the same. So that process is open.
Oh, Friday.
Through this Friday, yes, through this Friday, they can apply at COIC. We have had 170 small business and nonprofit applications so far, they're looking at the eligibility, but that sounds like a pretty perfect fit for them. If it was pretty clear-cut, you just have to submit your tax returns and your 21 financial reports, and if we can demonstrate a loss due to COVID, they would, you know, be eligible for funding them.
Yep, so it's kind of a standard scenario that everybody, and I kind of knew that, I was just bringing it up here.
Good.
And Commissioners, if, we're going to discuss ARPA potentially again next week, I think you all received a copy of the email from Eric King with the city of Bend regarding the 1.5 million. We've discussed offline that 750,000 had been allocated for a managed camp, they're rethinking the managed camp and using it for more transitional housing, more details will come, and then they're just seeking clarification on the remaining balance. So perhaps we can schedule that in the near term, just so the board can make a final decision on whether to approve that or not.
I would, I would love to hear from the city of Bend, you know, that, that kind of thematic, you know, like that kind of change in approach or philosophy, that's helpful to understand, but I would also really like to understand which facilities they're talking about, spending those 1.5 million dollars on for operating costs, because, I mean, it, it's, it still feels a little abstract right now, so, you know, you can see how, you can see how we're ready to sink our teeth into like, you know, a kitchen in Red, you know, at Shepherd's House in Redmond, we know exactly what that looks like. If this is still kind of, if we're not getting to specifics yet, it's hard, it's hard to feel that kind of same level of commitment.
That's great. Do you mind if I invite at least Eric King and if you, to discuss that next week? I think he'll be prepared to discuss that next week.
Yeah, on Wednesday, that would be perfect.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Other, other items?
Any other items? No?
No, we'll, we'll look at putting a packet together for you for next Wednesday, if we can get that on the agenda today. So we'll, we'll plan on that and follow up with these items we're taking notes on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you so much, Greg. Thanks for, and Dan, for your being, surrounding all these numbers and, you know, the ARPA funding, it's been something we never would have imagined when you were hired, could we? That we would be allocating $38 million from the government, so, anyway, yes.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I did just want to follow up, when Nick mentioned briefly that, that we've been selected to be part of the Joint Homeless Office pilot, that's really exciting. And there were, you know, if I read that list correctly, there was, there was 12 proposals, but there were, you know, a total of 15, 15 out of our 36 counties in Oregon were interested in getting in on this, on this program, and if they are going to do a lot less than, you know, the original pilot kind of concept was just for five. So if, you know, if, if we were able to get into the mix on that, I, you know, I think it's very exciting that, you know, we made the shortlist.
And considering that Jason has been putting it together, I'm glad we made the shortlist too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jason. Yeah, I know, I think he would have been very disappointed.
Many thanks to Representative Crop, many thanks to Representative Crop, but it...
Okay, all right. Is there any other business?
Couple of things. So I guess the board meetings, I was, yesterday afternoon, I did get in the mode, we had Public Safety Coordinating Council in the afternoon, so that was, you know, police, sheriff, public safety, juvenile justice, the, you know, the whole big picture there. And it was Measure 110 implementation at the state level, good discussion, it went on for a full hour, basically, the courts were there. Dollars are starting to flow, there's a, you know, kind of a system in place, and it's kind of the behavioral health centers in each county around the state, which is the key to this operation. Yeah, so it was an update yesterday, it was kind of a good roundtable discussion for everybody to hear about it.
Are these behavioral health centers, like existing facilities?
Well, so, sorry, yeah, Burns, they call them, whatever, Behavioral Health Network Services or something like that, I'm sorry, I, yeah, I guess I wasn't prepared to get too deep into that, but the concept that, you know, they are thinking 36 counties, specific implementation of these, you know, things they're calling Burns, as I say, now, I don't even have the whole acronym worked out, but, yeah, we could learn more about it here at the board level, as you're saying, that was, we learned about it yesterday.
Some of the Measure 110 dollars would be available for these Burns?
Yeah.
All forward to the, to the board, the presentation...
Yep, this is it.
...was yesterday, which will provide more information, then we can schedule a follow-up meeting if you're interested.
We certainly, I mean, you know, we hear regularly from our Behavioral Health Division about the need for treatment beds and treatment facilities in our, in our community, so, I mean, that, if that's, you know, I know that the implementation of Measure 110 is problematic, but if there's a, whatever opportunities come out of it, I hope we're on top of them.
Oh, yeah, well, Janice Garcia was there, she was part of the discussion yesterday, so, yeah, just letting everybody know, it was, and we can definitely get some good content on that at the board level if we're ready for it, or it'll come around when, when it happens, I'm sure. Also, so the Deschutes County Historical Society, so I'm a, you know, board member there, just as an experience or whatever, I was invited years ago, so it's just something I attended yesterday, Deschutes County Historical Society building, the rebuilding is a Deschutes County asset that we maintain and manage. You know, the message is, it's pretty positive, they've kept their doors open, when people come in, they come in in a small group, wearing masks, enjoying the different exhibits, so it's just a real positive, you know, simple cultural thing that's happening here, that's been able to keep their doors open, a lot of good end-of-year giving for the finances of the historical society itself, so that was kind of what we heard about yesterday. Also, the Ready, Redmond Economic Development Board this morning, was able to attend that before this board meeting, and there's a good active group of people there, a lot of projects out on the horizon in the Redmond area, a lot of land use, they say the downtown area, there basically isn't any empty storefronts anymore. So remember, they've just gone through a cycle where a lot of the storefronts were, not a lot, a subset of them were just kind of unused, you know, black plastic on the one, front windows of a few of them or whatever, and basically, there's projects in everything right now in downtown Redmond Core, which is pretty exciting to hear.
I think it's really important to...
Oh, yeah.
It's, the downtown area isn't that big, and when they have empty storefronts, it's, you know, considering the booming manufacturing that's outside, you know, on the other side of 97, it's really good to see the downtown thriving again.
Yeah, so it's gone through that cycle, you know, the bypass for years and getting the hotel opened again, and there was just those last few storefronts that were just unutilized, but it looks like they're all, they all have plans for something these days, which is pretty interesting. Also, the Core Three Public Safety Training Center, we had a meeting on Monday morning, I guess it was, as I say, between shoveling snow and trying to get to these online meetings, it's been a busy few days. So that, yeah, the Core Three, the kind of land use efforts for consulting contract, getting some land use figured out there, putting the ideas in place, it'll come back to us as a board at some point, you know, making sure, you know, we're going to be aligned with what's being talked about, so I've attended that meeting Monday also.
I just mentioned that I've been tracking pretty closely the regional effort around pursuing SB 762 landscape fuels reduction funding, and was really pleased to see that when, when the dust settled, the proposal that stretched... the proposal that stretches all the way from northern Klamath County into Jefferson County, we're requesting $6 million out of the 20 or 21 million that's available statewide. You know, if we can get, you know, if we got 2/3 of that or half of that, I think it'd be great. But, you know, if they got 6 million, even better. And one of the things I thought was most exciting about that proposal was it basically is all, their request is all for private land treatments. But the landscape contains a huge amount of federal land. And the federal land, the key role that the federal land played in the proposal is that there is funded federal work, in part because of, you know, prior advocacy to get federal funding focused in this area. But that, the federal dollars, you know, it's something like 17, 20 million dollars in the proposal is match. So that federal, that massive federal investment is going to help leverage, hopefully, you know, up to $6 million of state money to invest in private land treatments here in Deschutes County and, you know, spilling into Jefferson and Klamath Counties as well. But I just think that it's a, I think we have a very, very good chance of securing a large chunk of that $6 million request. And it's a game changer.
I just would like to, at this moment, acknowledge and thank Les Hudson for serving as Chair of our Planning Commission. He just gave notice, and for some reason, he's moving on the other side of the mountains. But we do appreciate his service the last couple of years as Chair of the Commission. It's a big responsibility and look forward to having a meeting, a joint meeting with them this year. I'm not sure when it's going to go on our calendar, but I think it's always important to see, you know, to be able to communicate and be in the same room with them. So I, and thank you, Les, for your service. It's been greatly appreciated. I did have my public health update yesterday. I thank Nahad and the entire team for getting together and giving the presentation and, you know, what, you know, what we're dealing with and what we're seeing in our state, in our nation, and, you know, in our county with our, with what is happening with our COVID. So, anyway, I thank them for all their diligence.
I got a couple of thank yous, too, real quick, kind of going down that path. I was thinking about it. So here for Deschutes County, our facilities group, I want a special thanks. Remember, we had a big snowstorm years ago, and the, you know, just the weight of the roofs was the issue. But finishing the roof projects, like at the Courtney Building and the courthouse itself, the maintenance of the facilities, knowing that when these big weather events come, that we don't have buckets that we're walking around, you know, managing drips. Because that's the way it was in the courthouse just last year. And then also the road department, you know, right now, this is the time, you know, through the holidays, there's been shift work and keeping the roads clear. It's amazing, you know, just watching the commute from here to my house. You know, I'm going on state and local roads and unmaintained roads and everything. And it's quite a project at this time. And this morning was an absolute royal mess. I know that it was more snow in Sisters than in southern Deschutes County. It was the message this weekend.
For me to get out of my driveway, it's a miracle. I mean, I like, oh, my gosh.
Oh, that was me this morning, too.
Yes. I wasn't shoveling, but I have shuffled before, so anyway.
But just keeping the equipment ready, keeping the staff going, the schedules. Because, you know, as it's happening, it's a pretty big deal. And, you know, just seeing the plows rolling down the road is, you know, real valuable at this time. And also shout out to the utility companies, you know, you think of the power, you know, we always worry about the trees and the limbs on the power lines and the weight or whatever, but I haven't really heard of any power outage in the last few days. I don't want to jinx anything, but thank you for the utility workers also.
Yes, for sure. No, there's a lot of people out there and always thanking them for working. It's truly, it's not easy to get to work someday. So thank you for all that you do, and the workers especially. I know I went out to the road department with a box of candy before Christmas because I knew this would be like their busy time. And you know they're doing a fabulous job when you don't get those phone calls or those emails. And truly, we've gotten them in the past. And, yeah, I haven't really gotten any complaining about, so it must be good news, right?
The potholes are still coming after.
Yeah, the potholes are coming, yes. I do see a lot of potholes. Oh, well, anyway, any other, Nick?
Commissioner, Chair, I would just follow up on your comments with our former Chair, Les Hudson, that we have initiated the recruitment. So if anybody's watching, it's an at-large position, which means anybody, any resident in the county can apply to serve on the Deschutes County Planning Commission for the remainder of his term, which is about two and a half years. The applications are available on our website. If you're looking for the jobs, there's a volunteer section there. And the applications are due on January 28. So we certainly invite people to apply and serve Deschutes County.
Well, and then, real quick, so this is the Planning Commission representing the land outside of the cities, the development patterns, the code of development. And it's also, it's at the guidance of the Community Development Director. Setting the agenda is done by the staff or at the board level, or ideas that percolate up. So ideas can come from there. But, yeah, it's the kind of the long-term land use development patterns of Deschutes County private land.
And I just want to say a thank you to St. Charles for actually, hopefully, they're working on those 5,000 procedures that have been put on the backtrack. Someone in my family got the call and made the, what is it, seven-hour commute in the worst weather ever for a major surgery. So, thank you, and hopefully we'll be able to get down on those 5,000. You know, hopefully, the chart going back up to 95 won't happen. And will, people will get their therapeutics and not have to go to the hospital. So let's hope our community knows what their therapeutics are, vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc, and stay healthy and also get exercise. Thank you, and thank you to Stephanie for all that she does. Thank you for making our job seem much smoother than it could be. And thank you for being here. So, and with that, we'll adjourn.